Call this meeting to order. All those willing and able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item number three, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Katie motion, Chrissy seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No, same sign. All right, motion passes. Moving on to item number four, public forum. All right. Moving on to item number five, presentation and 5.1, Steve Pumper from PMA.
Welcome, Steve. So we've had the, been aware of the bonding authority and we've asked that, there's been some questions about if maybe we could bond now, have the money, what does that, what's the implications of that, or where we were at, and kind of in order of what we should do with this remaining authority. So Steve is our financial advisors here to kind of talk you through some of those things and give you a recap since got two new board members, just a recap of, of kind of where we're at. So turn it over to Steve and I will be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Board Chair, Board Member, Steve Pumper with PMA Financial. For those of you who are on the board, you may remember we were here in the fall along with my colleague, Michael Hark, presenting some of this information. So some of this we'll review. There's a few new things to point out and certainly as the market has changed since last fall, we have some updated information as well. Okay? And good, the presentation is on the screen if you follow along. Some of the numbers will get a little bit small, so you might want to follow along on your printed materials because you might be able to see on that as well. So kind of where did, where did this come from? So refreshing a little history back in 2019, you had a referendum that was successful and on the ballot it was an amount of $27,730,000. Because the way the law was written at that time, you were only allowed to sell a certain limit dollar amount of those bonds that would also include a premium that was included when you went to the market on your bonds as well. So when you went, you sold $25,415,000, but you received premium from the people who purchased your bonds on behalf. And that was limited to 102% of that, of your ballot amount. The statute has since changed in 2021 and it removes that 102% limitation. So that means that you are able to, if you wish to, recapture the remaining $2,315,000 of voter approved authority. Okay? So that's just because of a law change. You didn't do anything wrong when you sold the, sold the bonds, it just is what happened. The next page, Mr. Superintendent, if you just want to scroll forward, just shows you some of the math behind it. So again, your ballot language, if you look at the blue on the right-hand side was $27,730,000. Under the old law, the maximum amount that you could sell was $28,362,576, which you almost sold very close to that same amount. And the difference now, of course, is because the law has changed. So you just have, just have that advantage like any other district in the state has the same advantage.
I think I just saw Marshall did the same thing.
He did. Yes, you're right. Yeah, and there's a bunch of other districts that we're working with who've already taken advantage of this and some others are in the same boat as you, they're considering it right now. Yep. Including Russell Tyler, who I'm going to point that out because they're just your neighbors. Yep. The next page, just, I want to point this out, kind of shows you what happened on a residential homestead property. When you went to the voters, and I want you to kind of point out the yellow highlighted sales down there on the, on the bottom. You said that, this was just an estimate, that you thought if they voted yes, that their taxes would increase by $36. When everything shook out and your bonds were sold and you got some favorable rates, their actual increase was only $15. So $21 less than what you had told them when they went to the polls. Okay? The rest of the chart is just kind of showing the tax impact total for all of your levies, so not just your, your school bonds, but everything else over the last eight-year period of time. And we're showing a home value at $150,000. That's stagnant, that's consistent over that eight-year period of time. And we know that that's not true in all cases because certainly some valuations have changed. But that's just what that, that chart represents. The next page is even more, no unintended graphic, because if you look at the, the yellow boxes on this one, this is for agricultural property. And we're using a piece of agricultural property that's valued at $6,500 an acre. And of course, we realize that can change. But when you went to the voters, you said that there would be an increase of 56 cents per acre. And again, when that all shook out, the agriculture property actually received a nine-cent decrease per acre. And again, especially for newer board members or anybody else who may be watching, the real reason for that, part of it was because of the bond sale and the favorable interest rates you received. But the bigger reason is what was called the Ag to School credit. And farmers have received a big credit for any debt that is issued. They don't get this on your regular levy, but any debt that is outstanding for a district, the state is paying. And actually, if you go to the next.
Well, I can add a little bit.
Sure.
At the time of the bond, which was in April, the Ag to School tax credit was 40%. And in May, they passed and increased it in a graduated rate up to 70%, which is I think what we hit next year, it'll be 70%. So at the time, we couldn't say it was going to be higher, but it was at 40% in its, in its increase.
Yeah. And actually before, thank you, Kevin, I should have pointed that out earlier because that's, that's what you'll see on this chart above. On the taxes, you'll see a continually decrease, go back one slide, sorry Kevin. A decrease per acre for Aglan. Because as Kevin said, when, when you went to the voters, you thought it was 40% credit, which it was. But then they enacted before you even sold the bonds, they increased it to 50%. And then it's gradually increased to taxes payable in 2023, so the taxes farmers will be paying this year, to 70%. Now it's capped out at 70% unless the legislature makes a change. It doesn't go away, I'm going to make that clear because some people say, okay, now we got 70%. Is this the last year we have it? No, it just will stay at 70% in perpetuity unless the legislature, you know, makes that change.
In the omnibus bill last spring, it was actually increased to 85%, but the omnibus bill didn't pass, so. But there was talk of increasing it more.
And you would think with this year, with the large surplus, it would certainly.
Well, I'm sure it'll be a discussion again.
Be a discussion, yeah. The next page just shows you the effect of that. So for your, this is not true of every district, but for your district, because of the way your property values work, any school bond issue or any debt issue that you pass at all, your Aglan will receive a 50% credit, I mean, sorry, I shouldn't have said that way. In total, your taxes are being paid 50% by the state on your debt. So for instance, if you pass a $2 million bond, 1 million of that is going to come from people other than the residents in Pipestone. So the rest of the state is contributing towards that. So you're just, the way just your property values work, 50% of all your debt is being paid by other people than those residents in the state.
So our elementary school and the bond on that of $27 million, in the end, the state will pay 51% of that. And the taxpayers at Pipestone Area School will pay 49. And this authority that we're talking about, this 2.3 million, the Ag to School applies to that. So it's really 1.15 million will be local taxes and the other half will be state aid through the Ag to School tax credit.
That's right. Okay, so now we get to the next page and now we start getting kind of busy. This is a busy slide and I have it broken down and on pages going forward as well. But what I have here on color code, I kind of have them in three different columns. So we're, we're looking at if you were to sell your bonds in the spring, and I'll go over what that means in a minute. You'll see the, the gold highlighted, or robi below that, showing the effect, the tax increase on a $150,000 home. So under scenario A, which would be you're selling that under 10-year debt, the taxes would go up $18 annually. If you were to sell that same amount of debt over 15-year period of time, it would go up $14. And if you were to sell that same amount of debt over a 10-year period of time, it would go up $11. Okay, because obviously you're paying it off. Right? Now, what I also want to show before I go on to the other rows is that if you sell your bonds in the spring, and I don't expect you to understand all the math behind this, but because you will need to make an interest payment within the first year if you sell your bonds, and you already made your levy, your, your board took action on the levy in December, you don't have any money in your levy to make an interest payment. So the only way to do that is use a mechanism which is called capitalized interest. So we take the first payment that you need to make out of your bond proceeds. So if you look up above there, you'll see that about the fourth row down, it says, under scenario A, it says capitalized interest of $86,719. And that means your project amount, which is the number ahead, means you would get $2,365,000 for your project. But if you go over to the, the next columns, let's say bond sold in August, you don't have any capitalized interest anymore because now you'll be able to make the levy for that first payment within the first 12 months with your board action that you would take next December. So that means you have a full $2,450,000 towards your project funds. And I should explain that too. We are, we are expecting that when you sell bonds. You will receive some capitalized interest on that as well, which will be able to go towards your project fund. So even though you have $2,315,000 of authority, we still think you will get, if you don't have any capitalized interest, just north of $2.4 million of funds that you can actually use towards your project. Okay? That's, that is our assumption at that point in time. So we've got those three columns that's saying that, you know, this is what your tax impact would be if you wanted to sell your bonds right now. Okay? If you wanted to wait and sell your bonds in the fall and then have additional dollars that would go to your project fund because you don't need to take money out for that, your first interest payment, now you'll see that the tax impacts are exactly the same if the interest rates stay the same between now and if we sell in August. Right? So that's a, that's a big assumption because anything can happen to interest. They can go down, they can go up. So what we did is we threw another set of series of columns there to say, well, what happens if interest rates go up? Okay? How much of effect is that? So if you want to wait and sell these, you know, what kind of chance are you taking? But we're saying if interest rates go up a full percent between now and next fall, your tax increases are very nominal. So instead of having an $18 tax, annual tax increase, you would have a $19 tax increase instead of a 20-year bond, or a 10-year bond. If it was a 15, you would go from 14 to 15. If it was a 10 or 20-year bond, it'd go from 11 to 15. So it's very nominal, at 1%. Now, is that the max it can go up? No, but you can just see that even incrementally, it's, it's pretty negligible as far as taking the market risk between now and then. Okay, so people understand that so far? All right. So then if we go to the next page, now we're just going to kind of break it down over into periods of 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years. And the reason I want to show you these, it's very important when you make the decision on what projects you may choose to fund. So there's two considerations on the length of the bond. The one is really a legal authority, meaning that if you are going to fund projects that have a lifespan of 10, 11, or 12 years, you only can sell bonds that are going to be, you know, 10, 11, or 12 years in length. If you want to sell 20-year bonds, which makes the tax impact or the, you know, amount of payment smaller over time, you just need to make sure that you're spending it on projects that have a lifespan of 20 years. Okay, does that make sense? All right. The other consideration boards sometimes look at is, okay, the tax impacts, which I just showed you, are very nominal between all those different scenarios. But the amount of interest that your, your residents will be paying over the life of the bonds does change significantly, you know, for 10, 15, or 20 years. And obviously, the other part is true as well, as far as if you only have a 10-year bond, that means I'm only paying that tax increase for 10-year period of time. And after 10 years, it goes away, right? I'll have to pay for, you know, as long as that. So when we look at the top of those columns, we see that the total interest for bonds that have a 10-year period that are sold in the spring is $720,000 roughly. If we sell those in August, it's $704,000, so really close to the same amount. But if it has a 1% increase, it's $874,000. But then if we compare those to the next page, which is just showing the same information, but for 15 years, now your total interest, you know, goes from $720,000 to $1,082,000 over the life of 15 years as opposed to over the life of 10. Okay? You following me with that? And then if we go one more page, which just shows 20 years, now your total interest is almost 1.5 million. So those numbers sometimes make a difference to board members when they're making addition, a decision. How much are we going to? Usually the reason you spread debt over a 20-year period of time is because you're trying to keep the tax impact as low as possible for your resident, right? But it's up to you to decide how you, how you want to structure that. But we're just, you know, sharing this and giving this all information as well.
Steve.
Yes.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
So you're talking about the length span, 10, 11, 12, or 20 years. I would say, I know, you know, when I appreciate items, there's an example you're supposed to use. Who's going to determine if it's 10, 15, 20?
The board will. I mean, it really will be. We'll give you, you know, certainly our recommendations. But to me, the first one, whether it's 10, 15, or 20, is really going to be where you're funding. I mean, you might not have a choice. I mean, for instance, I know that, like for some, some school districts might be funding a turf field. A turf field has a life of 10 years, they can't do a 20-year bond for that. You know, just can't do it. Yeah, I mean, so somebody, we're not making a recommendation tonight. We're just sharing information and when you decide what you want to do, we can, you know, let you know what the odds are, you know, as well. One other, and I'll get that too when we get to a debt service chart. If you have your money retiring after 10 years, as an example, and again, I'm not trying to lead you to that, but if you do, it just gives a board 10 years down the road, some additional options to do some additional work at that point in time, right? Than having all your money locked up and for a 20-year period of time. So there are, you know, pros and cons to going as well. This next chart I want to show you again, just in the, makes things a little more complicated, but just to give you the full information. So I told you, one more slide, sorry, yep, that's it. That if you sell your bonds in the spring, you're going to have to pay roughly $90,000 of capitalized interest. Right? Somewhere in that, that range. However, if you sell the bonds in the spring, that means you get your money earlier. And so if you get your money in April and we invest that at, right now, the, just without even investing in anything other than the money market, you're going to get north of 4%. And that would, that would estimate that you'd get additional like $33,000 of interest that you wouldn't receive if you sold it in the fall. So that would decrease that capitalized interest, it doesn't increase the amount, but it increases the effect of the capitalized interest by 33. So you're losing kind of about $60,000 for the project, right? The interest that you earn on the bonds can be spent only for construction purposes. Okay?
So just to, I guess that was the question, the interest we would earn would be roughly how much?
33,000. Just for that.
But we have to make a payment out of this.
Yes.
Of 90?
Of 90, yep.
So we would, we would lose 60,000?
Correct. Yeah, but I just want to show you, so instead of thinking that you're losing 90,000 to the project, you're probably really losing like 60,000. Does that make, just the effect? Does that make sense?
I think that was what we were wondering about. I mean, with 2.3 million of authority, you know, you're talking 2.28 rather than, or, you know, I mean, you won't have that full 2.3 million.
Yeah, except.
If you do it right now.
Right, Kevin, other than I, again, we created, everything's not really easy, right? Even though you have the 2.3 million of authority, you're probably going to get about $2.4 million that will go to your project fund because of the premium that we're expecting to get from bidders. Every bid is coming with premium now, so there's no reason not to expect that. Again. Yep. So you'll get 2.4, but whatever number you get, you'll get about $90,000 less to the project fund if you do it now. But then you can offset that by roughly $30,000 of extra interest.
And then the 2.4 will also generate interest earnings.
For sure. But that will happen whether, whether it's sold now or sold in the fall. I mean, that will be the same.
If you did it earlier, though, you're locking in your interest if you think it's going to go higher, right?
Yep.
On the investment side or the?
Yeah. I mean, if you went till the fall to sell the bonds, interest could go up another percent. Then you could end up having to pay an extra 1%.
Right.
Correct.
Yes.
Or it could go down too. You've got to look at it.
Yes, you're absolutely right.
And that was this page, page seven, the far right column. You have a 1% increase. You can kind of give you the dollar amount, so you can kind of judge what that would look like.
Right. The 1%, just, just to make sure that everyone understands it. If rates go up, it won't affect how much you have available for your project. It will just affect how much interest you're paying over time and the taxes that you collect over time. So it would have, like for instance, I showed you, it really is only about a dollar per home. But, but if that's where the increase comes, it doesn't affect how much money you have for your project.
Right.
Okay.
I have one more question for you.
Yeah, for sure.
When they did the, the last bond, what was the interest rate at that point?
No, I don't have that point. We weren't the ones who sold the bond. I don't have it.
Kevin, do you have any idea what that was? I'm just curious, because it's really gone up in the last.
2.3 or 2.4 somewhere?
Well, I've got a chart in here, and we'll kind of be able to see something really close.
Just curious.
Okay, yeah, and I wish I had prepared myself to tell you what that was. I could certainly find it out. But we're actually, we're almost there, we can get you pretty close to where the interest rate was. Okay, so the considerations, the timing of the, of the bond sale. This is kind of recapping some of the things I've already said. So the impact of capitalized interest, I mean, so if you, I'm sorry. The timing means do you want to sell now or sometime in the spring, or do you want to wait till August or later? And that's kind of the magic date. If you wait till August or later, there will be no capitalized interest. If you sell anytime before then, there will be. Okay? So that's your time, timing consideration. So the second bullet point we just talked about, interest rate risk. I illustrated what 1% is, but there's no guarantees, it could only be 1%. And of course, it can go down too, right? But to me, one of the biggest pieces is decisions made on the projects to be funded. When we go out to sell the bonds, if you choose to do so, I'm not saying you are. If you choose to go out and sell the bonds, we need to put together what's called an official statement that your potential buyers come in to do bids on. And they want to know what you're doing with the money. So you have to decide. The other piece, of course, I already told you legally, we need to know what you're doing with the money because we can't sell your bonds longer with the useful life of the project you're funding with those bonds is as well. And the other piece I didn't talk about is that once you sell your bonds and receive your money, according to IRS guidelines, 5% of that total dollar amount has to be committed to the project contractually. It doesn't have to be spent necessarily, but you have to have a binding contract that 5% is committed within the first six months. Okay? So again, what a school district cannot do is say, hey, we've got this authority, I'm going to sell it tomorrow and we'll decide next summer if we're going to, how we're going to spend this money. You can't do that. Okay? The second bullet point there says that 85% of all funds need to be spent within a three-year period of time as well. Okay? So once you receive the funds, your clock starts ticking, as far as that goes. The other consideration or one, another consideration is when do you need the cash to pay the bills? So I look at Jackie. So, you know, if you start doing these projects, come June and you wait till August to sell your bonds, you might not have the, the money available to pay it. My guess is in this case, you probably would because it takes a while for people to get up and running and actually do a lot of work, but you still want to keep that in consideration. And then the last piece is really your investment earnings. And that kind of goes down to, back to that $33,000. The longer you have the money, the more money you're going to make, you know, that would be available to the project. And that would be really go more, so let's say that you could sell your bonds in August, but you want to wait till December to sell, which you still could do, you're losing, you know, that many months worth of interest on the investment side of things. Okay? So if you know, if you've identified your projects, you know what you want to do with it, we know how long the useful life is on our, I would say, go. At that point in time, it's a green light, you know, go. So the next slide is the consideration for the length of the bonds. I already talked probably at nauseam about the useful life of the projects. We talked about the tax impact, and in your case, it just doesn't seem like it's much of a consideration at all because it's just so nominal, change. Total interest paid might, might have an effect on board members. And I showed you what those numbers are. And then I just actually mentioned that about if you sell your bonds and they're retired in 10 years as opposed to 20, it just gives future boards and future administration some additional room to make plans 10 years from now because that debt will be retired. Okay? So that's just something else to look at. The way we plan on structuring these bonds, this just shows you a 20-year level. It would look different if it's 10 or 15. But the, the blue bonds represent your current debt that you sold, the debt payments each, each year. The, the, the gold color represents your lease levy to pay off some bonds that way. And then the red would represent the new debt. So we're just, we're just making equal payments, spreading it out over 20 years would be the same 15 years. It would just, you know, take the last five years off or 10, and we take the last 10 off. So what you'll see is that just because the way your debt structure is, once that lease levy goes away, which you'd have four more years of, you'll have a slight decrease at that point in time. But it really, really has nothing to do with these bonds, it has really to do with your other bonds that would be expiring. And then the, the next chart I have marked, this will kind of, kind of maybe give you an indication, although it'd be hard to be exact. But this shows you what the, the rates on, this is showing a AAA bond, you're not AAA rated district, but over a 10-year bond index, how the rates have gone up and down. And you'll notice that, you know, over, you know, between roughly April of '20 through October of '21, we've had historically low interest rates nationally. This is not just Minnesota, this is national. And so now where we're at right now, honestly, is even at that high point that happened, you know, roughly in October, December of 2022, that is actually kind of the norm. If you look back over a 20-year period of time, that's kind of where interest rates kind of normally are. It just looks high in this chart because it just hasn't been at that high in a way. But you also see that now, lately, they've come down quite a bit. So unfortunately, I can't be the crystal ball that's going to tell you what's going to happen, but right now, you're in a good environment to sell. But if you look back and look at where your interest rates were, you know, kind of talking where Kevin was saying, you probably were in that 2% range, you know, 2-something on your 20-year debt. So that's what that looks like. And then the very last page I have before I'll open up to any other questions is kind of the next steps. So the board needs to provide direction, you know, to the administration, whether they should proceed or not on selling this additional debt. You don't, you're not required to, you just have the ability to. And if yes, then you definitely need to identify the projects and then let us know, and we'll help you with any advice you'd want, but the time of the sale, when you want to do that, do you want to do it now or do you want to wait till the fall? And then how long we should do that for. And then we would work with Bond Council to get the required resolutions and get everything ready to sell and get you your funds when they're ready to be used for your projects.
And for, if you were to time this with our levy authority, August, not really before August?
Yeah, we could, we're, I mean, if you, tonight, I'm not saying you're not prepared tonight, but if tonight you were to tell us that, yeah, we want to go forward and we want to wait till August to sell the bonds, we could start the process, get everything in place to ready to go. We just wouldn't sell them until they would, they would close within August's first date. So we don't have to wait till the fall to get the ball rolling if you want to wait till the fall. But we just wouldn't go out to bid until, it's usually about four weeks before you receive your funds. So if you wanted an August date, we would probably hold the sale sometime in July or late June. Yep. And if you wanted it earlier than that, we'd start ASAP. I mean, as soon as you're ready to go, we would start.
But before we can do that, we have to know what we're doing with it.
Yes.
Okay. That's the first step.
I think so. I think it's honestly, not just legally, but probably best for your public.
Right.
You know, to know that too. If you're going to go and, and do additional debt that they have to pay.
Right.
They probably want, would want to say, well, are you spending it on, right?
Right, yeah.
Any more questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, can I just add one more thing, Mr. Chair? One of the things that I know that Kevin probably has told you about this because I know he, he's aware of this. The types of projects that you can fund with this have to have been kind of considered as part of your initial referendum. So like, for instance, if, I'm making this up because you couldn't do it with $2 million, but if you wanted to build the new elementary school, that was never part of your discussion on your referendum. So you couldn't use this money to go build a new elementary school. It'd have to be kind of the projects that you were talking about at the time you went to the voters initially.
We know the facilities and grounds committee met, right? To kind of identify some projects?
Oh, yeah.
And we had a list of?
Yeah, was, yeah.
Yes.
Was it December?
It was in December.
I mean, we, we did review our facilities assessment and, and what came out of that, what our community steering committees discussed and where things were at, so. So I think we have that and we have a pretty good idea of what, what the ideas were as we, we went through that, so. That's where it's kind of, what do we want to do with it, so.
Sure.
Okay.
Awesome. Any more questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number six, the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda we want to pull for discussion?
I'd like to pull six point three point three, and maybe talk about in a closed session.
Okay.
If, if at all possible.
Can we move that to the bottom of the agenda, and maybe do it towards the end? Closed session, and then come back and open session at the end, if that works for everyone? All right, anything else on the consent agenda for discussion? All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of six point three point three?
Some of. Second.
Motion by Katie, second by Amy. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number seven, financials, seven point one, review of budget year-to-date.
Current budget year-to-date, we're at forty-nine percent, and last year, we were at fifty percent.
Any questions for Jackie? All right, we'll move on to seven point two, approval of the treasures report for December twenty-twenty-two.
Current cash balance is eight point nine million dollars. Last year, at this time, it was seven point nine million.
Any questions on the treasures report? Do I have a motion to approve the treasures report for December of twenty-twenty-two?
Some of.
Chrissy?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Seven point three, approved treasures report for elementary building bond.
The current balance is thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents, and this is just interest after we closed it sold.
It's very low.
Next month, the ending balance will be zero. We just have five days of interest into this month, so.
I'll move to approve the treasure report for the elementary building bond. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chrissy is the second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Seven point four, approve regular bills for January. Any discussion? Any questions on the bills? Do I have a motion to approve the regular bills for January?
Some of.
Katie and Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Seven point five, approve high school activity bills for January. Any question on the activity bills? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the high school activity bills for January?
Some of.
Amy?
Second.
Mark, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the high school activity bills for January signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight, Board Forum Information, eight point one, Board Reports and Updates. Any updates from committees, or anybody that attended an awesome MSBA conference, or?
Yes, it was very good, especially the, what was it, Dr. Alfred? What was his lesson?
Adolf Brown.
Adolf Brown, yes. He was very good, very mean, just a lot of cool things to take home from him.
Get a good message around, just making sure you're aware that everybody's carrying something, and so when you're talking to them and getting to know them, that, you know, it's things in the past, or things that they're carrying that form the personality, or the person that they are, so.
Yeah, and just being kind to people. I mean, that was his big thing, too, just, you know.
What do you say, just because you think it doesn't mean you have to say it?
You're right. Yes.
A good message.
Yes. We talked about how your brain sends you so many messages per nanosecond, or something like that, and that you can't. It's your past, like, experiences, and just what you've been taught, what tells, your brain sends it to you. But that doesn't mean you have to act on those messages. Thinking of doesn't make you a bad person. Saying them does. So, yeah, it was very good. That was very good.
I think the sessions were pretty good, too. It was good. It's been a couple of funky years with the conference and COVID, and now it was kind of like we were back again more in a normal environment. So, well-attended, and quite a few people from across the state, so. Overall, it went pretty well.
The governor was there, gave some opening remarks, which I have never seen since I've been on the board.
It's been video.
Yeah. Yeah, I think he's been there.
Yeah.
He was at that meeting, that lunch in that one time.
Oh, he did show up for that lunch.
That was right after he was first elected, yeah.
Sounds like there could be some big things coming for education, so.
Yeah.
Any more reports? I don't think we had any committees.
No, I don't think so.
All right, we'll move on to item nine, Administrator's Report, nine point one, Superintendent Board Report.
January enrollment, we're down a couple from last month, so I think we're within ten or twelve from the beginning of the year, so our enrollment is fairly stable. I think we've seen bigger shifts in years past, so. And then I just had also, it says here, MSBA, but it's legislative. The legislature has convened, and so there are a lot of bills in the hopper, and a lot of things going on. So it is early, and we will see what it is. But with the surplus, and with the governor, and the House and Senate under Democratic control, there probably will be dollars, and laws, and all kinds of things coming our way. So our lobbyists are there, and making sure that we get them the right way. I think one thing we may see is the universal free lunch in the state of Minnesota will probably come. It sounds like that's something they want to do. Formula, our education formula, governor's proposing foreign to an inflationary increase, which will be an interesting debate. There's good things with that, possibly some bad things with that, so we'll just kind of see. First time the legislators probably have that discussion in a while. I think we're looking at some special education funding to offset some of those costs, so. There should be, there should be some dollars coming our way, but it'll be interesting to see how it all plays out, and if they do tie other things to it, so. But it sounds like they are going to be done on May twenty, twentieth, and they're not going into any extra sessions, or, and I think they may try to get some things done, and not have that big omnibus bill, but they can say that all they want, and we'll still see what happens in the end, so. Once, not even, not even once. Oh, probably won't happen, though. So, anyway, there's a lot going on down there, and I am going. When am I going? They have a day at the Capitol, the superintendents go down. I believe there are about sixteen superintendents from southwest Minnesota, and we go and meet with our legislators, and kind of is a time for them to ask us what things are going on, what we feel is important, and so we try to share that, so. But I know that most of our work on, from our end, Minnesota Rural Education Association and Minnesota School Board Association do a lot of advocacy on behalf of our district and for rural schools, so. That's kind of where I'm at.
Any questions for Kevin? No? All right, we'll move on to nine point two, Principal's Board Report.
Good evening, everyone. A few things we got coming up for the month of February. This Friday, we are going to be celebrating our end-of-the-quarter, second-quarter party for our students, so we're going to be celebrating kids, which is awesome. Two students will be selected from each of the classrooms, and they'll come down. We've got, it says, on-target sashes for them, and we're going to parade them around the school and celebrate those kids. We're having a party, a dance party as well, so we'll have a dance party, and then we'll have popcorn and juice afterwards. February is I Love to Read Month. I have a group of teachers together, and we've got some fun activities planned to celebrate reading throughout the month. One of the activities we have planned is mystery readers, so if you are interested in being a mystery reader in my class, in one of the classrooms, please let me know, and I can get you hooked up with a teacher. So at any time, just shoot me an email, or talk to me afterwards. On the February first, second, and third, I'll be attending the principal's conference up in the city, so I'm excited to attend that. And then on February third, we have our terrific kid program at the elementary. Some big things we've got coming up.
Any questions for Jennifer? Thank you. We'll move on to nine point three, Director of Curriculum Teaching and Learning and Community Education.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome new board members. Tonight, I'm going to talk about community ed in front of you. You each have the winter schedule for twenty-twenty-three. Sign-up is going right now. The advisory council recommended at least a month, four weeks' worth of sign-up time before any classes would start, so that is how I arranged our schedule. This has been shared via the school webpage, via CSOFT, through the elementary, via the middle school, high school parents just went out today through Synergy. I'm learning a lot about doing Facebook and Instagram campaigns, which is a lot of fun. It's, you know, just a nice new little challenge. Kyle interviewed me on Friday for a newspaper article coming out this Thursday about these sessions. I visited the senior center and had a really awesome conversation with Diane Hurd there, so left a few there. And then I also made an email out to all district staff, so everyone else is aware of what's going on as well. Right now, we have, through the new online registration through My Payments Plus, which is what our school district uses to pay online bill-pay-for-lunch program. Eleven people have signed up for courses. No one has come in to register in person yet. And February first is the first night of offerings with our stop-motion videos that Mrs. Up is offering. And then our next thing that comes in order would be cribbage is starting right in this very room. So I'm excited about it. I'm also nervous, because I don't want to have to cancel classes. So hopefully, a few more people get registered and things, because we do reserve the right to cancel classes. You know, are the people who put on the classes, do, you know, any resources that they have to purchase come out of that? And then they get paid that, so they're not doing it for free. And the community ed, we're not a moneymaker. It's kind of in and out. So that is our goal. Twenty-eight people have consistently, for the past two Wednesdays, shown up for pickleball, the rotating match play in the middle school, high school gym on Wednesday nights from seven PM until nine PM. Right now, that is a free event. And I want to thank Joe Skelhaus for calling to request it. That's how things happen when, when community members call. It gets on our schedule, and I can ask questions and make things happen. I also want to thank Rich and his crew for working to set up each Wednesday night. It takes about a half an hour to get everything set up and ready to go. And that will run through mid-April, so hopefully by then, there'll be less snow, and they can be outside. Spring offerings will be planned. I'm already starting to plan the spring offerings. The month of February is that focus, with registration during March for classes in April, May, and June. And there's a lot more to come. This is a lot more than ten percent of my job, and I know the school board really wanted this. And so I have put tremendous effort into making your guys' wish happen, and it's a lot of fun. So, Katie, question?
This is awesome. I've seen it on Facebook. I've seen it multiple places, and people are talking about it. And I have, I mean, you're doing an awesome job. This is what, yeah.
This is what it should be.
This is what we wanted.
You're giving me goosebumps, because this is what our community, and our staff, and our students, and everyone deserves. So I'm excited that you've entrusted me to do this, and, you know, as you're hearing things, if you hear bring me negatives to, remember that I can take constructive criticism, because I want to do what's best for what we have, so.
What I think is cool, if you're having conversations with the senior part of the, you know, that's cool, because I think, you know, that's places where you can get kids and seniors, and just the different parts of the community together.
Exactly. I mean, and the very first offering, cribbage. I mean, if we can have some generational crossover going on here, I mean, I had a grandfather, my grandpa Louis would go to school in Milroy and play cribbage with those kids every week. And I mean, hello, those kids remember that. And if we can get more people involved, game night was one of the biggest things on, for, as far as kids and families, on our survey that we did for community ed this fall. Game night was a huge thing, so I'm like, well, why don't we start off with something that we're already doing at school, that we already have all of the equipment for, and then we have a nice space for, too, so.
Stick with it, too, Mel. Like, if it doesn't gain traction right away, don't give up on it.
I actually just sent an email, so I'm working on earning my community ed director's license. I'm in my internship while I'm doing the job, and so the person who is my supervisor is one of Marshall's curriculum directors. So Thursday, I'm going to spend most of the day with her, just ask lots of questions, and, you know, just really see how that big of a program works, and all the bells and whistles that they do. So I'm still learning. I don't know everything, and I appreciate when people give me advice. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. All right, moving on to item number ten, discussion items, and ten point one, mid-year goals review.
Each year, we kind of want to follow up on our strategic plan, and just to refresh everyone, in twenty-twenty, the school board asked the Minnesota School Board Association to facilitate a strategic planning process, and from that, the school district established a strategic plan and goals. So in your sheets, or in your packet, we have the strategic plan and our goals that we have. I also have a, kind of an update and a timeline as to where we are at with the goals, so you can see that on what's been completed, what's partially complete. I say that the podcasts developing and explaining school finance are partially complete, because we have the knowledge. We just haven't done the podcasts.
We're all looking at you, Jackie.
Because me and you are going to do podcasts.
The K-Dog Show.
KJ Dog.
KJ Dog.
Yeah. So we're working on that. I guess it's one of, school finances, one of those things that just, we can have those available so people can watch if they want to learn about things. I looked at, you know, where we're at, there's a couple things. In the spring of twenty-twenty-one, we talked about improved communication, and we enlisted the social school for EDU, which is, helps us with our Facebook and getting all of that out, which has been pretty positive. We are up, and does the board wish to continue with?
Yes.
With that?
And I think they've done a great job, because, I mean, I see stuff all the time, positive stuff all the time.
And it just keeps reinforcing that positive, and so it's been a good thing with Facebook, so we'll, we'll continue with that. I also have down here that five point three, positive school climate measures assessed. And we did a survey, and we actually contracted out for that. We didn't do that here this fall. Would you like us to go out and do that survey like we did a year and a half ago, where we got all the information?
Was that, that was just internal, right?
No, that was with
It was three phases.
Oh.
Who was the company, staff, and?
School perceptions.
Yes, sorry.
We use school perceptions to do the survey. We paid.
How much does that cost? How much did that cost? Do you remember?
It was like forty-five hundred. That's a number that sticks in my head.
But there was an internal component, too, right?
It was like teachers, it was staff, parents, and community, right?
They put it all together. It's pretty thorough on what they hear, so. They put it all together, it's pretty thorough, um, on what they hear, so.
It might be nice to get another one just to see how it compares to the one before to see if we've made any improvements otherwise.
It's been a year, it's been right out a year, or when?
Maybe it's two.
Oh, almost.
I think it's a year and a half or two, cause...
Okay, so it is, I was gonna say, I just don't wanna do it too soon where you're not...
School climate, December twenty twenty, we did a, a school climate assessment, and then we used, used that, so we're, we're talking, yeah, I guess it's been two years.
I feel like it's timely since, cause we've moved the new elementary schools now, a year and a half nearing end of completion of year two, and that, um, there was a lot of growth that came out of that, um, growing together, so I feel like it would be timely from that aspect.
Or one more year and implement DMPDIS two, right? So that could have some impacts on the data.
Cause that would've been... I mean, I think it's the only way you really tell.
Yeah.
I mean, you really get, uh, unbiased opinion about, you know, what people feel like, feel...
We've done some internal surveys, but this would be that full-blown here.
And that was also before you started doing rounding with staff, so that might also show some differences?
Probably before it.
Okay. This, this, back to the social school for EDU.
EDU.
I like what they're doing, but when they bring the renewal, could they show us some data, like what it was before and what it's been after, so we can see that?
How many they're hitting, you mean how many people are looking at? Most liked posts and, yeah.
Okay. Sure?
Yeah, we get...
Yeah.
They're showing us how much activity is taking place and how many people...
Do you know if it's increased since, or no, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I'll say, cause I feel like I see more and more, I mean, and just people sharing it and... Even just simple things like measuring the school, the classroom with marshmallows, that was, I remember, that was so cute, like they just, there's lots of great stuff that's posted.
Definitely. So, I don't know if there's any questions on goals or anything there, um, at the end of the year, we're kinda looking at our, um, proficiencies in reading and math and, and science, so, um, that was kind of our goal to look at what improvement was made. We did make these goals before COVID, so that will take a little bit of a hit. Uh, I would guess there's gonna be a little bit of an issue there, but...
Has, has there been any discussion on the training and education for paraprofessionals? I know we've done some work, but are we continuing to do that, or?
We're training all the time, I, I had partially complete, cause I'm not sure where the job descriptions are at with the principals handout, I know that there's expectations and, you know, uh, all of those things, but, um, as far as, we, we talked about job descriptions in each of the different areas and I've not had any chance to see where that's at, but we're busy and trying to keep everybody and jobs change and...
It's kind of a slippery slope because we invest a ton of money...
I think that was one of the, I think that was one of the things that we wanted to, you know, why is it, um, we had people that were in and out in, in the paraprofessional ranks and it hasn't gotten any better. Um, we do have our core that have been here with us and stay with us, but still it's hard to fill positions and keep them, um, just, it's a challenge, but that's another position, so.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't know if anybody has any other questions on mid-year goals. We'll again follow up in, in June typically, we have a work session and we'll...
Review in more detail.
Review in more detail with where, where we're at with things, so.
All right, there's no other questions, we'll move on to item ten point two, library.
Um, last month, there was a, um, said that I had been contacted by Robert Minders, uh, in regards to the not having to keep the name of the library, and the board said that we really weren't interested in initiating that, we accepted the gift and we'd keep the name, and if they wanted to, uh, didn't want us to name it, they would need to initiate something, so on January third, we got a letter from, uh, Robert Minders, uh, it's, it reads, Dear Superintendent Enerson, this is to inform you, the trustees of the Minders Foundation met January third, twenty twenty-three. At the meeting, the trustees unanimously agreed to release Pipestone Area Schools from its obligation to include the name Minders in the name of the school library. Please call if you have any further questions. I, I checked with our attorney, I said, so is this good enough, and they said if the board were to make a motion to drop the name, uh, from the, from the school library, that we would make that, do that, take that action, and then we would send a letter to the Minders Foundation.
Is the only signage that has it on, the stuff on the front of this building? That's the only place that...
There's some out here too, isn't there?
Oh, and really?
Yeah.
Okay. But the main signs do not just say library, right?
They just say library.
They just say library.
Yeah, right.
So...
What do you guys think? Do we wanna discuss more? Do we wanna do a name change, drop the name? Do we wanna take action, or what's the wishes of the board?
Well, I mean, if they wanna, I mean, if they don't want us to have the name on the building, more than I, I'm fine with it not being on there. I mean, I don't wanna hold hostage, I mean, you know what I mean, it's like... I think it's with their, it, it's their choice and... It's appreciated, the gift is, even if the name is released, it's still largely appreciated and it was a wonderful gift for a beautiful facility. Yeah.
Still a gift.
Right.
Just, uh, we accepted a million dollars in the bond for the building of this building and...
And it was used for what it was intended to.
In exchange for naming the library. They had choices of the gym, the auditorium and music areas, they chose the library, so, um, they wanna move on, so.
So what would the cost be of fit, can we just take the, I mean, is, what's on the outsides of the building, how much would it cost for us to change all that?
I don't know.
Or just remove it?
I would guess they're bolted on.
Just remove it?
I think they're bolted on.
I don't think that would cause any structural damage to the brick.
Okay.
It'd just be popping off the...
Mm-hmm. Patching.
Maybe some patching, but overall it should be...
So what does it say, Minders Community Library?
Minders Community Library right out.
So all you have to take off is the Minders end, right? You could leave the community library.
Could, yeah. I think, it might all be one whole sign, I, I don't know.
I haven't looked at it close enough.
I had to look at it on the way in, but I can't remember what it said.
And then it's above this door out here too, so...
Just painted, or I don't even know.
No, it's another thing that's bolted on, so there would be some, I think that's a sheet rock up there, so that won't be, if there's anything that happens that way.
Well, I think you'd wanna sign that says community lib, well, not really community library, no.
Library.
You wouldn't need anything then, but you'd want it all to be... You might put middle school, high school library, just cause I know like when you're advertising a lot of disinformation, we're directing them towards, you know, so...
Outside of this town.
I don't know if we'd wanna take action naming it officially the high school, middle school library, I mean, it's kind of...
I think once, if it's gone, it just becomes the library, library, center, whatever they, however they refer to it.
So we would, we would need a motion to discontinue the name, that's important.
I'm, I move that we discontinue the Minders, um, Community Library and release the name back to them, the foundation.
Katie, motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Amy, seconds? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those of, all those in favor of releasing the Minders Community Library name from the Pipestone Middle School, High School Library signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. I didn't name it, I just said to, yeah, just to drop the name. All right, we will move on to item number eleven, board action, eleven point one, resolution approving gifts to the school. Uh, this resolution states that we receive the following donations, uh, Woodstock American Reform Church donation of one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars for student lunches, Christ the King Lutheran Church donation of one hundred dollars to the wellness room, Catherine Dregson donation of a used flute valued at a hundred and fifty dollars to the band program, Jeanette Larson donation of a high school, hi, donation of high-quality used clarinet valued at one thousand dollars to the band program, Annette Baze donation of a used, or Bose, do we know if it's, I think it's Bose, donation of a used trombone valued at one hundred and fifty dollars to the band program. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution, approving gifts to the school?
So moved.
Science.
Katie and Chrissy, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Item eleven point two, resolution approving gifts to high school activities, uh, we receive the following donations, Julie Manzy donation of five hundred dollars to the French Club. Uh, the following donations are for robotics, Girlmark Inc. lubricants, fifty dollars, Andrew Kraus, one hundred and fifty dollars, JS Logos, twenty-five dollars, DNT's Meat Market, three hundred dollars, Pipestone Family Chiropractic, one hundred dollars, CW Welding and Fabrication LLC, one hundred dollars, Dr. Paul Hendrickson, one hundred dollars, Ludoff Bus Service, two hundred dollars, Darvo Foods of Pipestone Inc., two hundred dollars, and Whips Auto Sales, fifty dollars. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution approving gifts to high school activities?
So moved.
Katie?
Second.
Amy? Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, big thank you to all of these donations.
Lots of donations, very awesome.
I didn't have them all added up in total like Jeff used to, but I just know it's a lot of money, so we appreciate it. Uh, all right, so we've got a motion and a second, all those in favor of the resolution approving gifts for high school activities signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Eleven point three, Paraprofessional Recognition Week, January twenty-third to January twenty-ninth.
Um, just each year, the governor, um, proclaims this is Paraprofessional Recognition Week, so, uh, we just recognize and thank our paraprofessionals for their support of our students and, uh, staff and, and jobs that they have, uh, here in our school, so, uh, we do appreciate all of them, and I think we are at forty-one paraprofessionals in our district and, um, really appreciate all the work that they do each and every day.
Absolutely.
Do we do something as far as, like a la- lunch or something for them during this week?
I think there's some, uh, principals do a few activities or have some, some things that...
The elementary, good lunch on Monday.
Okay.
And of course, I think, to see if...
Okay, good.
So, and we all made a proclamation.
Do we need to approve the, the...
Well, it's, it's a proc, it's been done already by the governor, I suppose we can...
Second the governor?
I think, we can put it in the paper.
It's proclaimed, so this week across Minnesota, it's paraprofessional.
He's probably got more power than us.
Yeah, hanging in there. So I think we're good there.
All right, move on to eleven point four, uh, February twentieth, twenty twenty-three, snow makeup day for December twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Our calendar, um, had February twentieth as the first snow makeup day, um, we did have a, uh, a snow makeup or a snow day on December twenty-second that will be assigned there. Uh, we have a few other days also, we, we still have two e-learning days, and I know that, uh, I've talked with other superintendents, I think, even though we're only given five, we're probably, if you have room in your calendar and the timelines and timeframes, uh, we'll probably continue with e-learning if we have a significant winter, but as of right now, um, and I'll bring these to you each month, but, uh, March seventeenth is scheduled to be made up, uh, in accordance with our calendar and also April sixth, so those are the dates right now, uh, that we're looking at, so.
And I think those went out in the email.
And we did today, as a student makeup day too, so...
I'm pretty sure I received them in the email from, as a parent, from Cory or some, I don't know who they came from, but I remember seeing them, which I was glad that they were push, we were pushing them out early.
That's our tentative plan, like I said, we don't know how crazy this could be, you're going out, and so if there are, we, I, I just wanna have some flexibility to maybe make some adjustments as needed to be where we're at, so. All these makeup, you want them to be timely and reasonable, I don't wanna just add them on at the end of the year just to add them on, so, um, but right now, that's kind of our plan, so.
That's a non-action item?
It's already in the calendar, so I don't think, I mean, you put, when you approved the calendar, this was a makeup day, so today was not a student day and it was not a makeup, so that's why you took action, uh, to make today a student day, so.
Sure.
All right?
All right, we'll move on to eleven point five, approve policy two thirteen, school board committees.
Uh, at the last, uh, at your organizational meeting, you dropped the, uh, Facility Steering Committee, which was for the elementary school, so the policy reflects that change, and also there was a, uh, an assignment to the Public Library Board, which no longer is also a duty, uh, required, so the policy's been updated to reflect, uh, the current committee schedule that we have.
All right.
So you need to approve that.
Wishes of the board, do I have a motion to approve policy two thirteen, school board committees?
So moved.
Chrissy?
Second.
Katie? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, eleven point six, FY twenty twenty-three, general fund budget amendment.
Um, we had a number of changes and things that were done after July one, uh, with the project and with some ESSR funds and those types of things, so, um, Business Manager Kennedy has, uh, proposed budget amended amendments for your approval, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Kennedy.
Okay, I don't know for sure where to start, there's a lot of budget amendments in here.
Well, we got, what is this GF?
General Fund.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll start from the summary then, if you look at the very top sheet, which you guys would have, which would show what was approved back in June, the original budget, compared to the amended budget, we're going backwards like three hundred and two thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, okay? That's this top sheet, is everyone knowing what I'm looking at? Okay. Now, if you go to the next sheet, this is what, if the budget amendments are approved, this is what your budget year-to-date will look like, so we have, so everything's been adjusted, so we don't have any line items, now they have like two thousand four hundred and fifty-eight percent. And then all of those other sheets that you have basically explain each, what each budget amendment is. So I don't, you want me to go through each one, or do you have questions, or how would you like me to handle this?
Why don't you take them through the amended revenue and expenditures?
Mm-hmm.
Total, again.
Oh, that's...
R and E.
The very first sheet? Okay, the projected, um, original revenue was fourteen point six million, the amended revenue is fourteen point nine million, the, um, original expenditures approved in June was fifteen point six million, and the projected amended expenditures was sixteen point two million. So there's an increase in the deficit from one million twenty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-three cents to one million three hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and five dollars. So after making all the budget amendments, that's what the overall budget would look like.
So we're projecting a larger deficit than the original budget?
Correct.
But we're also projecting higher revenues than we anticipated, more mostly because of COVID-related dollars?
Yes.
And then the higher expenditures would follow that same revenue?
Yes, but overall, you're still increasing your deficit, so the revenues did not go up as much in the budget amendments as the expenditures did.
Yep.
And a lot of, I mean, a lot of it had to do with the elementary ballfield, which was approved after the original budget, the playground, um, insurance went up a little bit, unemployment, lease, the letters, which was approved in August, not in June, so a lot of them were things, and I think we all remember this from the, after the budget was approved and these were added on.
Mm-hmm.
And ESSR three, there were things that I had in the budget in June that we took out because then we were approved to do other things through ESSR three, it, it made everything very muddy, put it that way.
Do you think we'll need another revision towards the end of the year?
No.
Or, okay.
I, I... I, well, I shouldn't say that. Because we were trying to get a multi-functional activity vehicle with our ESSER 2 and ESSER 3 dollars. Well, I don't know if that we're gonna, I don't know if we're gonna get that or not, Mr. Enerson? I was just saying, I don't know if there's gonna be any other changes. I said, well, we're trying to get a multi-functional activity vehicle. That doesn't come this year. Then we're probably all have to come out of ESSER 3, then I would, I would have to use ESSER 2 dollars for something else. So it's, you have all these different pots of money and you have to spend them at a certain time, and that's why we're, there's a lot of moving pieces. But there shouldn't be any other major amendments. No, this should, this should be.
ESSER throws a lot of wrinkles in this stuff because it's, you know, and we're using these funding for things. We have things covered. We've got, we've got capital, capital budget for the ball fields and, you know, from the Brown and Hill sales. And you gave authority to do all that, so it's just a matter of accounting and trying to get everything covered. And we just, there were things decided later and we're just, Jackie's just cleaning them up with, with the budget, so. We recommend you approve the budget amendment as presented. It's a little bit larger than normal, but we've got other funds that are in play here that we normally probably wouldn't deal with on a year-by-year basis.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY 2023 General Fund Budget Amendment.
Second.
Chrissy's second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the FY 23 General Fund Budget Amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. We will now move on. Do we need a motion for recess or just call a recess? Like to call a 10-minute recess before we move on to the next agenda item. I'll call the meeting to order.
At 8:21?
At 8:21.
That's still on? That's still on?
And I am looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Some of it.
Looking for a second? Daphne? All those in favor of going into a closed session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order at 8:33 PM. And we are looking to take action on item 6.3.3 from the consent agenda.
For the report on the closed session, the discussion was about the process by which the baseball coaches were selected.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve 6.3.3?
Some of it.
Second.
Katie and Mark, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Move on to item number 12, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of it.
Second. Go ahead, Amy.
Katie and Amy? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Meeting adjourned.